Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming tonight. Dan, I think we actually should swear you in every Wednesday night. We would have nice crowds showing up for our council if we did that. So having said that, I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
So we have council members who are actually online tonight. So about half of us are here and half of us are online. I'm going to go ahead and call roll anyway. I'll begin with you, Councilman Joe Burns.
Present.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilman Nick LaVaca.
Present.
And I think that is it. Councilwoman Sarah Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen. And Councilman Brendan McGoughan.
Present.
Ah, there you are. You are online. Okay, very good. So everybody is here. We'll move right into the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda, Madam Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Joe Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoughan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. Same task.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So for the consent agenda, I have a motion by Councilman Diamond, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. So we are going to move right into actually an extraordinary event. We have appointed a new chief and Dan, if you can come forward.
No, this is the first time.
Hi, Dan Mapplewade.
Hi, Dan Mapplewade.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I support the Constitution.
That I support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully and impartially.
Truly faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of chief of police.
Perform the duties of chief of police.
In and for the city of Cedar Woolley.
In and for the city of Cedar Woolley.
Skagit County, Washington.
Skagit County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You are Cedar Woolley Chief of Police, Dan Mapplewade.
Other than being tongue tied? Goodness sakes, that was embarrassing. So we also have another presentation tonight and that is from Community Action. And I see the Director of Community Action, Bill Hinkle, is here. Bill, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you for being here tonight. Kind of an exceptional night tonight, so yeah.
Good to be here. Sorry, I didn't look at any cameras or anything.
No, no worries. So Bill, there is a button on the mic. And if you push it and the light comes on blue, you're on, you're hot.
And Mayor Johnson, I don't know if my presentation got through to your team. I hope.
So I think Bill will be doing that. And Bill, the recording icon is covering the presentation. I don't know if that can be removed.
Give me just a minute here. I'll see if I can do that.
Okay. So as you know, Community Action actually has many, many services. And Bill's going to share some of those with you. And they've also got some exciting news, which I feel like we had to have a part. We had a part of that as far as the legacy, the 50,000 that we gave to Community Action for the legacy. So I just want to say congratulations on getting that going and making that happen. And I look forward to the tour.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Bill's still not up. Is that okay to get started? We do have the materials in front of us. I will say that.
Okay, I'll follow your lead if you'd like. I can wait a second or go for it.
Okay. There you go.
Go for it.
Now it's up. Yep.
Oh, yes. Is it possible to back up to the beginning of the presentation? The hardest part of this is technology, isn't it?
Yeah, you gotta love it. Sometimes it doesn't cooperate.
Sometimes it doesn't.
Bill, is there? He's asking if we can go to the beginning of the presentation.
It now.
Okay.
Well, I can wing it, Mayor Johnson, or we can go for it. And I know you've got the materials.
Do you want, do you want a copy of the materials? Would that be helpful?
I've got them right here.
Okay.
I can go through it. Thank you, yeah, for your patience and forbearance. And if the technology catches up, we'll catch up to that slide. And we'll see how it, how it goes forward. But again, if you don't know me, I'm Bill Hickel. I'm Executive Director of Community Action, Skagit County. Pleasure to be here. Mayor Johnson was on our board, I don't know how many years ago. And some of council members have been through the years. And we've really appreciated the partnership and the support for the work that we do. So thank you very much and thank you for a few minutes tonight. My plan is to go through Community Action's services generally quickly and then focus in on our services to residents of Cedar Woolley.
Is that what you were looking for?
Excellent. We're on, we're on. And then end up, we have what we think is a pretty interesting project, affordable housing project. It's in Burlington and it's one we hope of many to come. And who knows, maybe there will be a project in Cedar Woolley someday. I sure would love that partnership and work together on that sort of thing. So that's our first slide. The second slide in your packet shows, at the bottom of the slide, it shows, I guess, a collection of some of our major services. If you don't know us, we touch about one in five Skagit County residents. And our services are designed to stabilize lives, especially people who are experiencing some kind of crisis or equip them with the tools and support to try to help them get out of poverty and move forward in their lives. We also do a lot on the community level, just trying to work with cities, with other nonprofits, Helping Hands and Your Community is a huge nonprofit partner that we work with and many, many others to try to address root causes of poverty. And as you'll see, when we start talking about housing, we've started to partner with private developers and private capital. And that is an interesting new territory for us and perhaps for the community. The biggest need that we see in the community coming through our doors is lack of housing people can afford for the wages they earn in, in, in the jobs that they have mainly in this community of ours. That's the biggest need that we see in our clients. I'm on the Mount Vernon Chamber Board. Our businesses also said the number one need for them in terms of retention and business vitality is housing for their employees, especially if you're not making higher in the six, six figures. As you probably know, it's tough to, to find a spot. The next slide shows some of our service centers. And we do have a, a large office in Mount Vernon, Burlington border, right by the Riverside Health Club. If you know it, we've got a center there. We have a center in Burlington that's Skagit Vets Connect. Robert and Becky Gates helped us establish that. It's for veterans who are in need of some level of support or navigating the rather complicated VA system and the like. And we also have our energy assistance there and a behavioral health ombuds program. In Cedar Woolley, we, we run what's not a lot of people know about. You all know about Helping Hands, which is an awesome food pantry that's serving people. We run the scheduled food distribution center. And its role is really storage and distribution. It's got a huge freezer, a huge fridge. I know Mayor Johnson recently went on a tour of that center. And you'll see that it's played quite a role in addressing hunger in this community through the years since it was established. We're proud to have that. We also manage the concrete East County Community Center up in concrete. And what used to be the senior center is now their community center. We're also out on with the NAS, working with Navy families, especially with our, our women infant and children programs. So we're kind of spread out all over the place. The next slide is fairly busy on the screen here, but hopefully it's a little bit more comprehensible in your packet. These are some of our impacts. The next slide, not this one, but the next one is some of our impacts from last year countywide. A few of, of the impacts I'd pull out really quickly. 476 households avoided eviction through our support. There was during COVID, trying to keep people in housing so that they wouldn't fall out of housing. Also landlords were having a hard time keeping their, keeping their housing because people weren't able to pay rent. And so it was sort of a double crisis. We were right in the center of that. We helped 204 households obtain safe and affordable housing. We also have a family shelter for families experiencing homelessness. That's in Mount Vernon. We helped 87 households through that. We helped 348 seniors and people with disabilities stay independent in their own homes. We have a volunteer workforce that goes out and, and helps seniors in their homes and tries to also connect with them. Our WIC program did wonders. You might have heard of the infant formula crisis going on. Our WIC programs really involved with trying to help families navigate that and many other issues related to having young children in our community. And in the, the, our food distribution center last year distributed 9.1 million pounds of food. 9.1 million pounds of food. This slide shows in COVID, some of the spikes of aid in terms of, of hunger in our community. It was huge. Normally in a, whatever normal is these, these days, but I, I guess pre-COVID, there's about 4.5 million pounds of food going out, so about double the amount during COVID. About 80% of the food that went out through the food pantries, Helping Hands and the many others, went through the center. And also it's a place that has space for, I think we have partnership with 25 farms now that we purchase food from either fresh or frozen produce or protein. You know, things like eggs, milk and, and meat and the like. And so that's quite a hopping place, but it's again, it's, it's not serving people directly. It's supporting the whole emergency food network. Last year, we served 1,588 unduplicated, unduplicated folks from Cedar Woolley. And you can see some of the services we provided, home heating assistance to make sure people were staying warm in their home. We worked a lot with folks who were on the edge of homelessness. And we helped navigate people to all sorts of support. The next slide just shows family type. I'll just whip through these really quickly, but yeah, a mixed mixture of, for the folks that we serve from Cedar Woolley, a mixture of single family and, and parents with kids, as you might expect. The slide after that just breaks down that 11% of the people that we served last year from Cedar Woolley were experiencing homelessness. 20% had a disability. A little more than half were female. And 26% were Hispanic Latinos, so some demographics. The next slide shows the income level of the people that we serve from your community. And what I'd highlight is that the big bar on the left is 0 to 30% of the area median income. That was the preponderance. That was the majority of the folks that we served were from Cedar Woolley. Were in that income category, which there's a little chart at the bottom that shows how much you would earn if you earned 30% of the area median income. If you're single, it's $1,442 per month, for example. So if you earn 30% of your area median income, about, oh, I would say about a year ago, the average rents for a one bedroom is $1,286 per month. So you would be spending about 89% of your income on housing if you, if, if you were paying the average rent. You might know, you might have heard, there's been a lot of pretty crazy substantial rental increases lately. Has to do with lack of stock. And people, of course, are trying to make a living. It's not easy to be a landlord and people are trying to be stable in their housing. If you're not earning a lot of money, it's really, and you don't already have a family home, it's really tough. Go ahead, Mayor Johnson.
And I wasn't sure that I heard you say it, but I think it's kind of important to hear. So really, what should a family be, what percentage of their income should be spent on housing?
Well, you know, people can always argue about that, but, but the, sort of the officially accepted hope is they're spending about 30% of their income on housing.
Thank you.
And that is used as sort of the definition of affordable housing. So you have enough leftover for, especially if they have kids, for childcare, obviously for food, for energy costs and the like. It's not always a reality that people were, will only be spending 30% of your area, of your income on housing. But that's kind of always the goal because that, at that point, a family starts to feel more stable and less on the edge. Less on that sort of, if, if we have one thing wrong, things are going to go south quick, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next, the next slide, a little bit of a bearer of bad news on, on this one for our county. This is for the county, Skagit County. University of Washington, every quarter, they do this four times a year. They do a survey of all communities, all counties in the state of Washington. And for the last two times they've done that survey, unfortunately, Skagit County had the lowest vacancy of any, rental vacancy of any county in the state of Washington. Walla Walla, we were, we've been kind of neck and neck with, with them for whatever reasons, for whatever mix of reasons. But unfortunately, we've got the tightest rental market in, in the state, in a state where there really is a housing crisis already in a region that there's a housing crisis, kind of in a country, but certainly on the coasts. We all know that part of that is, it's such a beautiful place to live and people want to be here, as do I. I was just in the housing market in Skagit about a year and a half ago. And boy, that was a brutal experience, but I was fortunate, knock on wood, to get into a lovely home in Bo Edison. But it is really, really hard. It's a tight market, whether you're in the homeowner market or in, especially in the rental market. There were 11 units that they found in their last survey that were vacant, 11 and zero studios. The next slide, you know, I don't, we don't have to get too hung up on this, but according to a, I think it was a 2019 Skagit Council of Governments report, their suggestion for the ideal mix of rentals and homeowner units for our community and the jobs in this community currently was about a 60% rentals, 40% homeowners. That's, there are some rough numbers there. There's a lot of calculations, but that has to do with what people are earning and what they can afford locally. Our current mix is 30% rentals and 70% single family. I love my single family home. Many people do, and I feel fortunate to have one. The reports suggest that we, we need to look at multifamily options for what people are earning here and we need to prioritize that. In that report, you know, there, in some ways, housing is really complicated and it's big dollar signs, as you know. In some ways, it's not complicated in terms of solving the issue. There are three main things. One is according, again, this is according to Skagit Council of Governments, but it's sort of based on research and what needs to happen to move forward. One is policy that's set. You all are, are doing wonderful work and part of your role is to determine the mix of housing that's appropriate for your community and where to put it. That's appropriate and builds vitality. Policy is a big one. Infrastructure and capacity is a big one. There are great nonprofit developers in our community. There are great for-profit developers in our community. One of them I know, a good friend of ours, built a really incredible, at least one incredible units in Cedar Woolley. And he's trying to make them relatively affordable for people because he's a man of faith. He did that as a private developer. They're great on both sides, they're just not enough. Or just don't have enough folks, nor do we have enough, according to people who work with contractors, enough skilled contractors. We've heard part of that reason is because folks who are even making the six fig, low six figures and our contractors can't find a place that they can afford and they can make the same money and go to a different community. That I've heard from some of our contractor folks. Anecdotally, that's not research based, but we do have a capacity if, issue. The other thing obviously is funding and access to capital. If you're going to do housing, you need to have access to dollars because it costs a lot to make housing. And sometimes that is a restriction. I'll, I'll, my, the next slide, and I'll try to kind of wrap it up here and, and open it up for questions if you have them. Our project in Burlington that we're, we've been cutting our teeth on. For years, we were just in certain, in the services realm. We work with people on the verge of homelessness or who are struggling to make ends meet. But as we've seen this problem persist and grow, we decided we needed to get into building housing as well and be part of the solution. Hopefully a, a positive proactive part of the solution and part of the creative part of the solution. The next slide shows where we're building our first project. And I mentioned Skagit Veterans Connect, that the gates helped us fund. It's on the first floor of this two-floor building. That's located across from the shopping mall in Burlington. And if you know Asia One Restaurant, it's sort of kitty quarter, corner to that. We are in this project partnering with a private developer who's accessing private financing. His name is Dan Mitzel and his wife is Patty Berkland. They own this facility. And we sat down with Dan. Dan has, is a private developer who's been building hotels and motels for 40 years or plus. And we said, how, how might we make this work? Because he had, and maybe you have this in your community, he had a commercial office space that was underutilized and not providing the funding stream he needed to sustain that. There, our community has a fair amount of commercial office space. It has very little residential. And so he had that business motivation, plus his heart is on the affordable house. He knows, he's got family members who have been there and struggled to get into housing. So we sat down and through working with Dan, figured out that if he built it and he was able to access capital a nonprofit couldn't. And we raised $600,000 for a nonprofit that we could turn the top floor of that. It's, it's got very few bearing walls, so it's easy to convert into 34 apartment homes, units. Mainly small, mostly studio, though a few one bedrooms and a few two bedrooms and some wheelchair accessible, et cetera. There's a, there's an elevator in that building. At about 70,000 bucks per unit. You compare that to most nonprofit development or even for-profit. At 70,000 for the construction, if you add in half the value of the facility, it's about 120,000. Normally it's about 250, 300, 350 and north of that per unit. And so this was a screaming deal that Dan is investing in. And we negotiated a return for him that is modest, but it's not bad. And we're raising $600,000 to bring down the capital cost because the rent we paid Dan to turn the whole 34 units into affordable housing is based on the, the cost of construction and a return for Dan. So $600,000 raised versus 2 million, 3 million, 5 million, 10 million, 15 million, depending on what size of projects you're talking about. And it's quick. It will be ready in August or September to put 34 households into it. And that ain't bad. It's not going to solve the, the issue in Skagit County, but we feel like it's an exciting model because it's a nonprofit and a for-profit coming together and trying to figure out how to, some people call it the missing middle, that the housing for people who work here or seniors living on fixed income. And so we're proud of it. We're going to prioritize 10 units for veterans because of Skagit Vets Connect. And the gates also contributed to it, as did Lisa and Mike Janiky and many others. Peace Health, United General, has from here contributed to it and is helping us sort of get a residential manager and staff so we can build our capacity. So that's my story today. There are tours available of this thing. Anytime you want to come by. We would love to, obviously, we would, would love to host you, Julia Mayor Johnson. And we would love it if council members or staff would like to tour it. And as I said, my gut tells me that there might be some opportunities some point in the future, whether with us or sister nonprofit. And as I said, my gut tells me that there might be some opportunities some point in the future, whether with us or sister nonprofit. To do some similar work and we would love to work with you on that if it makes sense to you and your community. So that is my. Well, that's not two cents. That was at least two and a half cents, maybe three cents.
But really good information. I was looking up the dates that you're actually doing the tours. I was not able to do that, but I did speak with Isabel.
Yeah.
Isabella and I'll be doing it at the end of the month.
And we can, it, it, I'm serious about this. If there is interest in just chatting a little bit and seeing it. We can, we can find a time that works for your group, whoever's interested. We'd love to do that. Yep.
Is there anybody who has questions or comments for Mr. Hinkle?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
First off, thank you for all the work that you're doing. And with being able to keep the cost down on this build, how much would one of those units rent for?
Well, we're. It, it, I, I know this sounds weird, but it it sort of depends. We, what, the answer to that is whatever the person's income is, they won't pay any more than thirty percent of it. And if they have a voucher, which their rental assistance vouchers, like Section Eight through Housing Authority. Or our agency has certain rental assistance vouchers. The issue being, we've got them, but there's no place to put people. Then we would charge the rate that the voucher would charge. And different vouchers have differing amounts. And if they come in as. If they're self-paying, we would charge a rent that would be sixty percent of the area median income. And thirty percent of that income. I know that sounds like a lot of math. But our goal, the simple answer to that is thirty percent of the people's income. Top high, top end would be going towards the rent. And it kind of depends on the funding stream. So sorry if that's a little bit, it's somewhere verge. Yeah, thirty percent of their income will be paid towards rent. And if we, the vouchers actually would give us a little bit of extra cash flow that we would turn into a flexible rental assistance. If somebody has to self-pay or if they lose that voucher and they still need to stay in the housing. And by the way, it's permanent housing. It's not transitory. But because they're small units, we think some people will use them as stepping stones if they're able to get out into a larger unit. After they have some positive rental history.
Some more transitional.
They're, they're not transitional, but they're permanent, but some people might use them as a way station. But that would be up to them. We, we don't have a, we won't have a clock ticking on, on their residency. Yep.
Anyone else?
Are you solving the puzzle, puzzle together? I know you want to go from twenty-nine percent rental to sixty. And i- it's just going to change the landscape in Mount Vernon, Burlington, Cedar Woolley. People like the old idea of homeownership.
Yes. As do I. I agree.
And how do we, how do we get around that without trying to achieve these? Ambiguous goals.
Well, you know, again, I think the question is. How much are people earning and what can they afford and what, what, what are the solutions for that? I love my single family home. I feel fortunate to be in it. I would say that if you think about thirty-four units. You, in that space of the picture that you saw, that doesn't take up a lot of space. The sixty, forty would be twenty-two single-family homes with whatever spread they have. So it's not like you have sixty of those to every single-family home. We'll have to get comfortable with a certain amount of density with, especially within city cores. My hope would be that there's a way to do it where we can A, preserve farmland. B, preserve the quality of life in our community. C, increase the safety and the vitality of our downtowns. I have seen examples where. There was one in Anacortes where they turned the Wilson Hotel. Into permanent housing. And what I heard anecdotally is that people, the, the businesses liked it because there was more people on the street. And once you have a few more people on the street, other people feel safer to be on the street. And then more people park and stay. And there are eyes on the neighborhood that there might not be if you just have a. A, a commercial core without residential attached. I don't know if in downtown Seadr, there are places where there might be opportunities for some residential add-ins. But those are the kinds of things. If you take two single-family homes and add one. They're called ADUs, just like a smaller unit. You've suddenly gotten seventy-five, twenty-five, so you've exceeded. So there's a mix of strategies you can use to get at least closer to. I don't think the ideal is the number. The ideal is what housing mix do we need for people who are living and working here? Or our seniors or our kids trying to stay here. And I think that's, that's, rather than focusing on the numbers, focusing on, on human beings. And how to make sure they have as much chance as possible. And if they get to the point where they can have a single-family home, we're not going to, I don't think the solution is to take away all the single-family homes. There, it's awesome. It just, I think we need to be creative about the mix. I hope that helps.
The integrity of neighborhoods in this kind of community is very important.
Yes, for sure.
You, you get rid of the neighborhoods, you get rid of your neighbors. What have you got left?
Yeah, I, I do. I agree that the, whatever the solution is, the integrity of the neighborhood has to be key. And you want to build on that. You don't want to take away from that. And that takes a lot of really smart thinking and really good policy, I think. Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Oh, go ahead. Just a moment, Mr. Lawaka, Sarah.
Are you seeing an increase in people, people? From Skagit County needing this help? Are you seeing more? Obviously, there's an increase of, of people from Skagit County needing this help, but are you seeing people coming from other areas? Needing that help into our county, looking for it here?
We haven't so much. What, what we've seen is a lot of people, because of COVID, there was a lot more opportunity to work virtually. So what the in-migration that we've experienced is more on the higher income level. And again, back to my own experience, I know that there were lots of people sitting in hotels with a lot of cash that I didn't have. I don't want to overemphasize that and demonize somebody from King County or California. But that's, we've experienced that now. There also is a certain amount. If you can't make ends meet. You're, you're going to try to be scrappy and figure out where to move to make them meet. Normally, people who are struggling want to be close to people they know, whether it's friends or family. Because that is sort of their last safety net, as well it should be. And so we see some of that. But not to the extent that it's overwhelming our systems, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just was wondering in the sense that I've seen. With the housing issues that were going on in the, the moratoriums that were happening. I know of several homeowners that were longtime landlords that just couldn't do it anymore after not, not.
Right.
Getting rent to pay the mortgage and they honestly didn't charge anything more than the mortgage. They were, they were good people that just. Wanted somebody to obtain that house and, and live in it for a while and, you know. And if when something happened to them, then they, you know, their wife or children could do with it, but that was it. And so those, they then sold. And people from out of town came in and bought those houses lots of times sight unseen. So residents here may not have even had the opportunities. You know, I can't speak for everybody. It's only my conversations with, with landlords and tenants and neighbors and that. And so just, just wondering kind of if you're seeing similar mixes in, in how that's affecting people that are looking for this housing.
Yeah, well, number one, we're, we're now a landlord. Being a landlord is not an easy gig.
No, no. And by affordable, I mean, I mean, a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home in town. Being rented for under a thousand dollars a month with a backyard and a dog. I mean, I'm not talking eighteen hundred dollar apartments.
That's a screaming.
They are screaming deals and they're just, we're good landlords.
Yeah, what we've seen is, is just that if, first of all, it's tough work to be a landlord. Secondly, there was the moratorium and COVID and people were struggling.
Right.
Thirdly, they could sell and make pretty good money. And so unfortunately, that's feeding the issue, fed the issue. I hope we can turn that around some, but I, we, our staff. Share all sorts of stories, like there was a woman, maybe it was about four, six months ago, somewhere in that range. Elderly, you know, been in the house, rented it, paid her rent on time. It got sold. And suddenly she was out, I was a thousand bucks more. All of a sudden, it was somewhere in the range of what you're talking about and she couldn't do it, you know. And so she, obviously, she came to us crying and in tears. And our team was trying hard to find a alternate space. But unfortunately, that is part of the pressure, part of the reality. And I hope I don't, I'm not, my earlier comments weren't damning landlords because it's a hard business to be in. We want more landlords. And the ones that we work with have a heart in some ways for the people that we're trying to get into housing. So I hope that answers your question. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have one more question coming from Councilman Lawaka.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Bill, I, actually, Sarah, I did speak a lot to it. I was going to ask which.
Councilman Lawaka, your, your volume has dropped out. In fact, he froze up. Okay. So I'm gonna, we're gonna move on. I did want to let you know, let the council know that the invitation that came out is for the fourteenth and sixteenth. It's from eleven to noon.
They're saying they're twenty-two hundred dollars a month and they're really expensive to get. And they're having difficulties with that. And they're from the area. They've lived here. They're moving from one place to another place. And the apartments that are coming up are going very quickly from, from what I understand, people that are coming from outside the area. In order to, to, to move into the area. Is there a way to create a. Some sort of a system that if people wanted to put their place up for rent, their apartment up for rent. They can have a system where they, they have an area that would go to local people to apply first? Or is that something that would actually, I guess, be against the law? Or how would, how would something like that look? So that way, if we build up apartments and they fill up automatically and the same people that were low-income are coming back saying, hey, we got no place to go. Now we're just in a, in a cycle continually building places for people outside.
Yeah, I, I'm not an attorney and there, there are fair housing standards that one has to be careful of as a landlord. We just have to be consistent is my understanding. And in the units we're building, mo, most of those folks are going to come through our, our staff. And be ref, internal referrals. And, and again, back to the question. I can't remember who posted about the, maybe it was Sarah, about the outside folks. I would say about ninety percent of those folks, maybe ninety-five are local. So we're able to do our own. Sort of filtering, as long as we do it. We don't change the rules on folks. We have to have a consistent set of rules. I believe the question, if I heard it right, is there a way to do that in the community? And I don't, I don't have the expertise to answer that, whether you can set a priority for a local folk. If you're a landlord, I don't know the, I, I could, I'll, I'll try to find the answer to that and send it. Send it back to you because that would be interesting to know.
So I, I don't see where the other council members have questions. I just have a real quick one. And that is with my conversation with Family Promise with Andrea. She talks about the need for housing for people that they are working with. And most of the people that they're working with, it is transitional housing. They do not do permanent housing. But I don't know, does community action work with those agencies with?
For sure, yeah, yeah. And some, some of those, we even went and got endorsements from the Friendship House, for example. Because like Family Promise, who's another I work with, with Audra quite a bit. And you know, we started with Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County, a Skagit Housing Consortium. For a group of for-profit and nonprofit folks to try to come together and she's on our steering committee. Most have the same issue. We do internally. Family Promise does. The Friendship House does. Whether or not you've got some levels of assistance, there's nowhere to put people. And so we've gotten a lot of enthusiasm from our partners that we're trying to move in this direction. So we hope we'll be helpful in that regard as well.
All right.
Yep.
Bill, I want to thank you so much for coming this evening, sharing the information. I am very excited about the project. I know that when I first came on and came on your board, you were actually looking to turn that into. Housing for veterans and, and even. Services for veterans and that, that didn't happen, but this is really, this is something really beautiful that's come out of that. So thank you for the dedication to our community and to the people who are in desperate need of a place to live. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your questions as well. Okay. Take care.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, we are going to go to reports and I, City Administrator. Hello, Charlie. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and Council. Two items on here. One item, the Police Department Staff Report is information only, but certainly the chief is here and can take questions if council has questions. The other item, the first item listed on there is the check-in regarding the mobile vendor regulations. That the city currently has in place. A little bit of background on this. We had a mobile vendor looking to locate in the city recently. And we looked at our, our code and we have a thousand dollar license fee for mobile vendors. And when we shared that with that particular business, they said that was completely cost prohibitive for them and they ended up, I believe in Burlington. They went to another community. So that had us kind of wondering and we talked with the Business Development Committee of the Council a bit on this topic. The Business Development Committee requested more information, so we put together a policy memo. Our intern Richie Coleman helped us do that. He did research on the area cities, Anacortes, Burlington, Mount Vernon, and Cedar Woolley. Looking at all of our mobile vendor business license fees. And ours at a thousand dollars was, was far greater. Most of the other communities are a hundred dollars or, or under that. So with that, we wanted to just bring this to the full council's attention and see if the council would like us to do any further work on this topic. If four or more council members aren't interested in proceeding with any further work on this, then it doesn't make sense for staff to go any further. But we had done a little bit of research. We wanted to share it with you and this is really a check-in to see if you'd like us to go any further. So I appreciate feedback from council if council is so inclined.
Any comments? Councilwoman Kesty?
Well, it's interesting because I met with a constituent today who was talking about this very same thing. And I guess I would like to hear more from our. Downtown business, businesses to get their input on how they feel. I know they're brick and mortars. And I know sometimes, you know, they have to struggle going through things and then, oh, it's summertime and we bring these vendors in. And then they get the benefit of that. I don't want to take business away from the downtown business. So I would just like to hear more from them and what they feel. But like for special events, I'm all for the cotton candy and the hamburgers and the different things that could be brought in. I mean, I said hamburgers, but things that maybe we don't have downtown would be really nice. So that's where I would be thinking.
So you're willing then to have that conversation is what you're saying. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to have that conversation. I think that the. Our fees here are completely out of line. If we're looking to have business come in and people come in to utilize that and, and enjoy themselves in our community. Then we need to make it a little bit more realistic.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor, it's Councilman McGoffin.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you. I'm with Councilman, Councilwoman Diamond on this as well. I think it's pretty high compared to what other people have. And I, I definitely see the point of supporting the brick and mortar businesses. But you know, there are times that, you know, a taco truck turns into a restaurant, you know. There's one in Burlington that went through that. So I think in a lot of food businesses can start as a, you know, truck or a vendor. And if they're successful. And if they're successful, you know, it turns into a brick and mortar business, but they don't need the upfront cost of the brick and mortar to test out their idea. So I think having such a high level of entry into that initial market is something we should consider.
Okay, so then would you like for us to open up this conversation so that we can actually discuss the pros and the cons? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yes.
All right, thank you. From the other council members? Councilman Owen or Lavaca? Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Burns?
Yes, I just very interested in looking at this. I think it might be prudent for us to lower that number quite a bit. Get a little bit more in line with other cities in the area. I understand the concern that, that was expressed about businesses downtown, making sure that they're not negatively impacted by this. I, I think that we could probably look at something that might be able to help with that, if that is a concern of the council members. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca, thank you for being patient.
No, no, thank you very much. I, I'm, I'm not quite sure how it would look with the, I would wanna have the conversation to see what that cost would look like and see if there's like a three-month intervals where the person could test out to see if they like it at a, at a much more reasonable cost or something. I, I kinda see it could turn into where we have some pretty unsightly food trucks around the shot, around the town. And it might not look as appeasing. I've seen some food trucks out there that, that are pretty rundown. And, but they got their permit and they're able to, to set up shop. It just doesn't make the community look very good. And I do know of a number of businesses here that are succeeding greatly. And I know some that are kinda struggling and they're kinda waiting on that, that logger rodeo and the fair and stuff to really pick up their business and help them generate that income to carry them through. Although I do agree the price is rather high, especially compared with all the other cities and it would be great to give those food trucks an opportunity.
So again, willing to have that conversation.
Yeah, we're not having the conversation right now. We're just, we're just agreeing on having the conversation. Is that correct?
Not, yeah, we, so the question was.
Well, then, yeah, I guess I could have just, yeah, have a conversation.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilman Allen.
Okay, I used to own a business down here for a long time. I, I think the fees after looking at what other cities are requiring are pretty exorbitant. I think they're very high and we can take a hard look. We don't have to be the cheapest. But you know, when you're ten times higher than somebody else or five times higher, that's, that's kind of a tough deal and I did have a brick and mortar place. So, you know, fair is fair, but I, I think what we're charging maybe is discouraging businesses from
Okay.
coming in.
Very good. So I get a total count of six. So it looks like this is something that the council members would like to have a conversation about. So, very glad, so would I. I was the one who brought it forward. I said, okay, something needs to happen here. All right. So, is that it? Okay, thank you Charlie. All right. Moving on to council member reports and I'll begin with those online and I'll start with you, Mr. Lavaca.
Nothing new really to report right now. Was able to last week do a, a nice bike ride to finish out May and, and just really enjoying the way the town is coming together and the parks that we have and the opportunity for the ride. It's really starting to feel like summer, so that's really gonna be exciting. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor, just grateful to see the sun out and shining right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanted to congratulate Chief McElroy and also thank Chief Tucker for all of his years of service. He did a great job and hope to see him around town. One other item, we had our Technology Committee meeting and we discussed a few items that are gonna be coming to council hopefully soon. Bill's been working really hard on him and he's doing a great job. We're looking at a succession plan and incorporating that into other plans within other departments. And we're looking at doing some more security testing with the state. And there's some more items that we discussed that we'll be bringing up at a later time. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And let's see here, Councilman Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate Chief McElroy and wish him well on his new venture. Encourage everybody to be very careful out there. There's, there's a lot of that COVID around now and I was exposed. And so far, I check every day and I'm still negative, so I just hope this thing goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. And then starting from my left, Councilwoman Diamond.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that Blast from the Past looked to be a good success for the community. We went out and, and personally checked it out. It was looked to be enjoyable for families and brought people in from all over. So it was good to see people out and, out and about in town. Even in the rain, people came out and, and weathered the storm there, so that was great. Lager Rodeo is, Parade is a go. So hopefully we'll have, we'll see people start turning out for that and turning in their applications. We also will have, the Cedar Woolley Little League is, is still planning to host the girls softball state tournament. That will be the weekend of July sixteenth. We're looking at eight to ten teams coming in. And they're still working out all the details for that, but that is something that, that will be going on here in our town. Outside of that, I just, just a reminder there to make sure to just be aware and of what's going on around. There have been some, you know, car prowl and other things that have gone on and been going on and upticking in the community. And so just, just to be aware, to lock your doors, put things, put your valuables away and look out for each other.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kesty.
My question is for Mark. Because of these couple nice days that we've had on North Reed there in my area, I'm seeing the kids come back out and they're playing back out in the streets. And so my question was, with the park space that we have, even though it's not set up for anything, but could it be something that people could see, like you can play soccer in here? You could throw the ball around on that park area? If, if we could just let people know that it is a space that we could potentially use right now, just for the grass purposes, it would be really awesome.
Okay, I'll discuss that with staff.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, nothing tonight.
All right. So just real quick, like, I too was able to attend Blast. It was wonderful. I want to extend our gratitude to the Public Works Team, especially Nathan's team, and also Leo's team. They helped to make that a success by the things that they put into place. And then the follow-up and the cleanup that they do, they're extraordinary. Special thanks to Nathan for coming out when the, some of the electrical went out and he came on his day off and he actually got it back up and running in no time at all. So great, grateful to them. If you could do that, thank you, Mark, if you could extend that. Also, another congratulations to our new chief, Dan McElroy. This is really exciting and we're looking forward to seeing his vision come forth. I have two more things. One is, once again, our wastewater treatment plant received the Outstanding Performance Award for 2021. And they went on to say here, this is in, in it, they said that it is diligent operators and strong management team working effectively together to achieve a high performance. Twenty twenty-one started out as the rainiest year on record, followed by extreme snowfall. It continued with record-setting heat. Tornado warnings, which I didn't, I didn't know if that was true or not, but I went back and checked and sure enough, we did, we did have them. And ended with flooding and more snowfall, turning the wastewater into clean water enough to discharge waterways. Takes efficient, an efficient process, control, skill, teamwork, and good judgment. And Ecology appreciates the extraordinary level of effort and work that the plant operators demonstrated through 2021. So again, extending our, our gratitude and our thanks and also congratulations to the wastewater treatment plant, so.
I will pass those regards on.
Thank you. Strong leadership on your part there, Mark, so thank you. And then you have in front of you the Skagit Farmlands. This came today in the mail from the Commissioners. And quite simply, they just want to let you know that they have nearly surpassed, or we have nearly surpassed fourteen thousand acres of protected farmland in 2021, which is outstanding, resulting in and extinguished two hundred and sixty-three residential development rights. And the success of this program would not be possible without the support and the partnership of the local, state, and federal level. So thank you to all of you who are supporting the farmland, saving the farmland legacy. And that's all I have. Now, we will now move into public comment. And wanna remind whoever comes forward that it's three minutes. Please state your name and your address. And also a reminder to the public and to those who may be online who wish to make comment that when you make a public comment, it is addressed to the council and not to the staff. So please refrain from any comments to the staff, but you're welcome to speak to us. So is there anybody who'd like to come forward in the audience and then I'll check online afterwards? It is six fifty-nine and I am opening public comment.
Brendan Marison, Rita Street. Last time I was here, Mayor Johnson attempted to cut me off and silence my comment. As soon as I hit the three mark, three-minute mark, she asks us to try and keep it under. Well, Mayor, I do try to keep it under these three minutes. It's not my fault. None of you address any of the very few public comments you get at these meetings. And when each meeting, one of you says something more stupid than you said the last meeting and you refuse to acknowledge your constituency's issues, I'm left with the daunting task of playing catch-up and trying to fit all of your incompetence and idiocy into a three-minute comment. Now, this fascist tactic is obviously done as a way to discourage public comments and silence any concerns stemming from your actions. The political theater you all put on every month isn't exactly difficult to figure out, but I refuse to be silenced. I served this country honorably for over a decade in two different military branches, as both an enlisted soldier and later a naval officer. I've stood up to captains and colonels, so I, I'll be damned if some small-town politicians are gonna tell me when I can or can't speak. I will say what I want, when I want, and I will take how long I want to say it. Now, you may not like what I have to say or how I choose to say it, but if it's respect you want, then it's respect you'll have to earn. Month after month, valid concerns from Cedar Woolley citizens are dismissed or ignored. And mistakes from any of you or the police department conveniently go unacknowledged and instead get swept under the rug. For a group of people who claim not to be like DC politicians, you all sound, act, and vote just like DC politicians. And just like the hacks in DC, speaking to all of you is like speaking to a wall. I've been calling you out for months now on your inaction towards the local police shooting a man in the back of the head. And the most I've gotten out of you is being told I was out of line because I said the F-word. Shooting someone in the back of the head, no issues with that. Complete silence until called on it. But if you use a bad word, be careful because Mayor Johnson might have to clutch your pearls. Look, you're clearly going to do whatever the hell you all want to anyway, with no regard for the people who elected you. But people in town will eventually see the unsustainable games you're all playing. Your actions and inactions will be noticed by more and more people and those people will ask more and more questions. But in the meantime, if I have to be the punishment of your crime of apathy and call on you, call on your BS, anyone, sorry. If I have to be the voice that breaks up your little echo chamber here and make you all uncomfortable for a few minutes, then so be it. If I have to be the punishment for your crime of apathy and call you on your BS, anyone with a nose can smell from a mile away, then so be it. And all because you refuse to be transparent and read a quick investigation report to keep Cedar Woolley citizens updated on a local tragedy. And if anyone in this town still has confidence in this council, you can all rest assured that if a tragedy like the SWPD shooting of David Babcock happens to you or your family, this council will rush into action multiple months later with some useless thoughts and prayers and then never bring it up again. You'll be forgotten and the people responsible for correcting the situation will go on with business as usual. Cedar Woolley deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for serving. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else for public comment? All right, how about online? Anyone else?
Alicia Marison, Rita Street. This is the most recent SMART investigation report for the police shooting of David Babcock by Officer Maxwell Rosser that the council and police representatives refused to read. The report reads, SMART is sending out this release as an update regarding the independent investigation into the death of fifty-one-year-old David A. Babcock of Concrete, Washington. This week, as part of the ongoing process, SMART investigators are awaiting reports from collaborating investigative agencies to further compile data. The next scheduled press, press release will be on June ninth. If there is a significant update in the investigation, information will be released prior to then. Previous press releases can be found at www.skagitcounty.net/smart/htlm/cases-htm. This is the end of the report. This five-sentence report is all my husband has been asking the council to read to ensure transparency and you can't even do that. We strongly encourage everyone to read the previous press releases as they sometimes remove important information from the updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, anybody online? Okay, seeing none, it is seven oh four and I am closing public comment and we will move on to new business. We do not have any unfinished business tonight. So we will begin with you, Mr. Freiberger. The approved advertisement for bids.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our annual paving project that we do, mostly funded with transportation benefit funds. This year, we've combined our arterial maintenance project, which is an overlay on trails, trail road, which is funded eighty-five percent by a Transportation Improvement Board grant and then the other fifteen percent with local funds. The final estimate came in slightly under the amount that was awarded by TBD, so it's fully funded and, and ready to move forward. That's Schedule A. Schedule B, however, had a, a little bit more of a challenge. This is the local access street part of the project, Schedule B, from basically Northern Street to SR twenty. The final estimate on this one came in at a little over a hundred ninety-one thousand. It was over our amount that we had budgeted. We are recommending that we go ahead and allocate an additional amount of eighty-two thousand dollars in REIT funds to allow us to go ahead and bid this project. We do have contingency and a fairly conservative allowance for the paving that's a major part of this project. In the estimate, it should come in somewhat under, but we do recommend that we go ahead. Prices are not gonna get any cheaper next year and the road does need to have its treatment. So we have a number of options. If the bids remain high, we can not do a, a local access or reduce the amount we do in twenty twenty-three. Or I, as I've noted in the memorandum, our arterial projects status right now is pretty good. We really don't have a problem with coming up with additional dollars to do this. And I do expect that we're gonna have some more positive things coming our way in terms of additional grant funds for one of the other projects, which will offset some of the REIT funds that we current have, currently have allocated for that project. So all in all, it's our recommendation that we move ahead and that council move to authorize staff to advertise for bids for the twenty twenty-two pavement project.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger? I do not see any online. Any at the dais here? Okay, so Mr. Freiberger is looking for a motion to authorize staff to place the advertisement for the twenty twenty-two pavement improvements project. Move to authorize the allocations of the additional eighty-two thousand dollars of REIT, one and two funds to Schedule B Puget Street pavement improvements. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Burns. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Very good.
Thank you, Council.
And moving on then to the Citizen Salary Commission decision, and Kelly, I believe this is yours.
Thank you. The Citizen Salary Commission has completed its work. Attached memo has specific changes to the mayor and city council salaries effective January first, two thousand and twenty one. There's no impact to two thousand and twenty two budget. That's all. If there's any questions, myself or the former finance director Debbie Burton is also online as well.
Okay, so there's no action here. This is information only. Are there any questions or comments to Kelly at this time? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Kelly. We will move on to the last item under new business and that is the proposed amendment to the urban village mixed-use overlay parking regulations. So John, good evening.
Good evening, Council. So this has been a topic that's been longing coming. The, I apologize, it took so long to get to the council. Planning Commission finished up work on this several months ago, but we've just been kind of overwhelmed in starting, especially starting with the two thousand and twenty two comp plan update, so. Finally was able to get it to you. So to refresh your memory, this is this was a proposal by the BY, by the RJ Group and BYK. They're two separate development companies, and they sent in a request for changes to the parking regulations in the urban village mixed-use overlay. So these regulations would only apply to the urban village mixed-use area, which is north of State Route twenty, west of Trail Road and extending up to Stendal Street. And then to the, a little bit west of Hodgins Street, the, including the old Cooser Farm. So that's the area generally that this would apply to. So keep in mind that this, that only, this is the only area that these changes would apply. The original proposal was, had two parts. I'll describe the first part. Describing two parts. First was a proposal to allow the required parking for a mixed-use building in the UVMU to use some of the on-street parking in front of the building. So the property that the city owns along the streets, you know, like the parking out in front of the building here on Metcalf, but it would be on either Stendal or Hodgins, for example, to count towards the required parking for their, their development. That, this is an issue that staff was, had some concern about because it's require, allowing the private land use, private landowner to use city property to accommodate their parking. So we were concerned about the possibility of conflict of interests and use of calling, being called a gifting of public funds to be able to use it like that. And ultimately, the planning commission made a recommendation against this part of the proposal, so. In the ordinance that you see, it's recommended by the planning commission, that part of the proposal is not included at all. So if you have any further questions about that, I'm happy to answer them at any time. But what I'll do, what I was planning to do is go on and talk about the rest of the proposal that the planning commission did recommend in favor of. So the, the other part of the proposal is to allow shared parking between the commercial aspect of a mixed commercial building and the residential aspect of a mixed commercial building. And the way it's, the way the proposal is written is that it would just be for those uses in one building, it wouldn't be applying to other buildings and try to get it too complicated. It would just be a shared use agreement between the residential and commercial components of one existing building and then on that private land there. So what this means is, when we have residential component of a building, we have requirements for so much parking based on the number of bedrooms in each unit, the number of units, and and some, some overflow calculation built into that as well. That would mean, so for example, if a, you know, a building has enough units that the, the residential component is, say, one hundred parking spaces. So you've got your one hundred parking spaces as staff, that's what we calculate, and we say, okay, you need one hundred for your residential. And then we look at the commercial component, and then there's a different criteria for the commercial component of a building. That commercial component also has to accommodate parking on site. And the way the code is currently written, your commercial component, say there was thirty, thirty required parking spaces based on the size of the, the commercial area. You'd have your thirty there and your one hundred there. They, you add them together and you get one hundred and thirty total parking spaces. That's the way the code is currently written. So what the, what the applicants requested is to allow some overlap of that. So it would be, you know, you have your one hundred and you have your thirty, and you can kind of overlap them over each other. And say, you know, you get your, you get your number below one thirty. So we, the argument in favor of that was, you know, commercial activity generally happens during the day, and residential parking needs are generally at night. So in the past, this has been something that other jurisdictions have allowed and still do continue to allow some overlap because, you know, there, if you're trying to reduce the amount of pavement, then you can share those parking uses because, in theory, people aren't there during the day. When commercial, the residents aren't there during the day when the commercial people come in, so they can use those parking spots, double duty. And it's a good idea in concept, and the hearings, the planning commission's findings talk about some of the criteria and some of the background in that. And then some of the cons that were discussed was, it wasn't, you know, market's kind of changing. People aren't necessarily leaving to go to work. And then, of course, Seadrill Willie is not a typical city. You know, we're not an urban environment. We're a more rural environment. So it was unclear if those parking, if, if those, if that's really the way people in Seadrill Willie behave. Also, there was some concern on the planning commission about we just made these rules in two thousand and nineteen for the urban village mixed-use area, and we haven't seen how they play out. But after weighing these considerations, the planning commission ultimately made a recommendation to approve the, the shared parking agreement as proposed by the RJ Group and BYK. That is what you see in the proposed ordinance. I just, you know, I had, I've, I've been, you know, thinking about this and having some conversations about how the ordinance is actually written. There are a couple of issues have come up. The share, the way the language is written right now is it doesn't specify how much of a reduction it would be, how much should be allowed to overlap, so we're a little concerned that it's, it's a little open-ended right now, so. I'd like to talk about that with the council and see what you want to do to see if we can put some, some bounds on that. What we've seen and what is also in the, the findings fact is discussion of how Burlington does it. And I'll just read what they say in, in their parking code is, if residential uses, if, if a residential use shares a parking with a retail, sales and service use other than lodging, eating, drinking establishments or entertainment uses, the parking requirement for the residential use may be reduced by thirty percent, provided that the reduction does not exceed the minimum parking requirement for the retail, sales and service use. Now, it's a little hard to picture what that really means, but what that means is, so we've, we've got our hundred parking spaces, we've got our thirty. So it says you can't reduce your parking, you can't reduce the commercial parking. And you can reduce thirty, your residential by thirty percent. So if you reduce your hundred parking spaces by thirty percent, I believe that gets you to seventy parking spaces from a hundred. But you still have your thirty one from your commercial and and you bring those together and thirty plus thirty, thirty plus thirty, seventy plus thirty, you end up with a hundred instead of a hundred and thirty. So that's what the planning commission recommended, and as I stated, staff would appreciate if we put some bounds on it before we went ahead and approved as the council, as the planning commission recommended. There's probably other topics that the council wants to discuss. I just wanted to bring up the big topics. And, you know, we don't, we don't really have any strong feelings about this one way or another. We're just bringing out what one concern that we have, and at this point, I'm happy to talk, answer any questions that the council has about this proposal. I apologize if it was not clear enough. I have received some questions from council, so trying to address those now. And hopefully I did cover it enough that there's not too many more questions, but I'm happy to answer what you have.
John, number one, I am just so happy with the amount of effort the planning commission puts into all of this. But maybe if any of the language could be tweaked a little more, I, I don't want on-street parking, obviously. And I understand what they're, you know, they just do a lot of work for nothing, so. Anyway, I, I just don't want on-street parking on Stendal or Hodgins or any of that stuff, so.
Well, to be clear, public works standards require that there would be on-street parking on Stendal and Hodgins as a part of these developments. However, what the planning commission recommended is not to allow those on-street parking spaces to count towards the required parking for those developments.
Okay, but can it, and you're saying it might be tweaked a little bit more, the language?
Well, that would be up to the council, because right now we've got an ordinance as proposed, and that, that is as written by the, by the, by the, the app, the applicants, the requests from RJ Group and BYK, it's as written, and staff feels like it needs to have a little bit of tweaking to give us some guidelines on how much we can reduce the parking. So I think there needs to be a discussion around that. But otherwise, the planning commission's recommendation as is, because there is, there is one typo in there that Councilman Lavaca pointed out. It's not sharked parking in one section. It's shared parking, and that's just a little typo that we'll be sure to take care of in the, the second read.
What kind of businesses are being entertained to be going into there? And I ask simply because I know that there are apartments and housing up above in several areas in the, in our town. There's not a lot, but there is some. And there are businesses around, and I, I know that those businesses sometimes don't have places for their employees to park because the residences have left there or their friends have come and left their vehicles there. And nobody's able to get them to come down and to remove their vehicles and those sorts of things, and, you know, and, and then it, we've, we've got things being towed and all that good stuff. So that, that plays part in some of that stuff, and that, that directly affects the people that are around the businesses that, that are there on both the, in the housing and in the, on the commercial side. You know, we're, we're trying and everybody's talking about developing commercial and pushing for that. Well, we, one of the things that I have gone around and talked to several different business owners in town about is the fact that we don't have enough parking for town, for the brick and mortars, for that sorts of stuff. So if people are wanting to have businesses and have people come in, they, they have to have adequate parking for their employees and for the customers to come in, or they're not going to survive. And unfortunately, you know, the, the stats in, in the way things have been done in the past aren't, we don't live in the same world and, and COVID just catapulted that into something totally different. People don't go to work the same hours. And with the inflation that we're seeing right now, I know people that are consolidating their households, and they now have three, four people living in what was supposed to be a single-family house simply because they can't afford what's out there. And so now you have four vehicles and what was meant to be two on-street parking. And I know that our code enforcement has been trying to get out there more recently and, and tagging vehicles and stuff like that as they're supposed to. But that's the reality that we've come into is, is, you know, it, it sounds great in concept. It sounds like we're eliminating, you know, we're, we're being a little bit more green, but the reality of our town is that it was not designed that way. And the people that are here at this point in time aren't there, and at least that's what I'm seeing. I also went and drove past several different apartment complexes and developments over the last couple of months, just because I wanted to see what, what things look like currently. And this isn't, you know, these are new developments, and there's different ideas, and and I get that. But that's the same reality that people are coming into too, is that, you know, there, what was supposed to not be, you know, there's no on-street parking, okay, because that then infringes on the city, and so we, we take that out of there. But then we've got these, then we've got people then parking in private property. So now they're going across the street and they're parking at the grocery store or they're parking at the local business down the street, and that local business owner is now having to have that car towed or having to deal with that because they don't have a place for their employees to park and that sorts of things. So it, it's spilling over. And it may not be, be on our streets necessarily, but it's spilling over onto other businesses and stuff. And so that's the kinds of things that I just want to avoid seeing happen in this because what, what's being, what would be created here is a precedence. And so moving forward and not knowing how this is even going to pan out as it is, I think we're, we need to walk a, a fine line and be very careful about how we do it. You know, we also have to make sure that there's enough, I know that, you know, everybody has to make sure there's enough room for our first responders to get in, whether they're, whether it's police, fire, all of that good stuff. And if we don't have adequate parking for people and we have overflow everywhere too, you're going to run into congestion with that. So I just kind of my thoughts as I'm processing this.
So thank you for bringing that up. First, I wanted to, in, in one of the earlier parts of your discussion, you asked, what are the allowed uses? So you've got your residential use, the apartments, that's pretty clear. And then the downstairs of these buildings are required to have a certain amount of commercial, at least fifty percent of the downstairs needs to be commercial. And if a property is fronting on Stendal Street or Hodgins Street, there, the allowed uses are retail and wholesale, food and drinking venues such as restaurants and taverns, banks and similar services, temporary lodging, including hotel motel and recreation and cultural uses. So those are the allowed uses and most of the buildings or some of the buildings, and then other, if they're not fronting on those roads, Stendal, Trail, Hodgins or twenty, then, then you're allowed retail and wholesale, professional services, general services, offices, recreation and cultural uses, food and venues such as restaurants and taverns, banks and similar services, commercial daycare centers, multifamily, residential of four units or more and residential uses above the first story, temporary lodging, including hotels, bed and breakfast and guesthouse, health facilities and healthcare excluding overnight accommodations. So those, those would be the, the type of uses that we would see in the commercial spaces, first floor of, of these buildings. The other part, you, it was clear that, you know, there's concerns about overflow parking. That was one of the topics that we discussed quite a bit at the planning commission. There, you know, these buildings are required if they're fronting on these, on a city street to provide on-street parking, unless it's Trail Road, which is already built out, and we can't provide on-street parking. And I suppose on Highway twenty, you wouldn't be able to build on-street parking either. So that leaves Stendal and Hodgins Road. If, so if a building's built along there, we require them to put on-street parking, but beyond that, there's no parking on Trail Road. There's no parking on Highway twenty. there's no parking on trail road. There's no parking on, uh, highway 20. So the only overflow parking outside of the, the, the provided parking spaces on-site are the limited off, uh, on-street parking along Stendal and Hodgins. So planning commission recognize, recognize that and staff recognizes that too. And yeah, there, it is a little unknown what, what it's going to be like because nothing has been built out there yet and, and occupied. So we haven't seen what the development patterns really are going to be. And that brings me to my final point, which is, um, you know, this was a proposal by two local developers that are both actively have projects in that area. It was, uh, so it's driven by an applicant request. Um, this is, you know, the council's decision to, uh, to make ultimately, um, we have the recommendation from the planning commission in the, in the packet here. As I mentioned, if we go with that, we'll probably need to tweak it. Uh, or we, staff requests that we tweak it to put some bounds on it. Or the other option entirely up to the council is, you know, to just say no to this proposal. And there is a, uh, also in the ordinance is a, is a resolution stating, you know, we considered this and uh, we, we were saying no. So it's entirely up to, it's entirely up to the council to decide what they want to do. But we've provided you the information that staff and planning commission is, uh, found through this process. And if there's not enough information, we could always look at it further.
Okay. So we have a question here by Councilwoman Kestie and, um, Councilman Burns. I saw you were on line two and I'll go to you after, after Councilwoman Kestie.
Mine's more just of my thoughts and the statement that I absolutely feel that it's so important when looking at changing parking requirements. We take a look at the impact these modifications will have and who they will benefit. Allowing the shared parking agreement only benefits the developer and not the residents of the building, the potential customers or the already established neighborhood. Those are the people who will suffer the consequences of this modification because the changes won't aid in added parking. It's taking it away. And it is our job to see that our town develops responsibly and that the impact from this growth benefits all. So long story short, if you're going to build it, you need to have the parking spaces that are required, are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my number two concern that I get from constituents is parking. So I have a really hard time with this one, uh, especially the open-ended nature of it, not having a percentage cap on there. Um, I don't think I'd be comfortable with anything over 10%, but even then, um, like Councilwoman Kestie said, uh, there's a lot of downsides to something like this, especially with the unknowns. And there's very little upside to be seen for us, I think. Um, I have a, a hard time, uh, seeing a benefit to the city by going with, uh, this change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any comments from Councilman Owens, McGoffin or, or Lavaca?
Hey, Madam Mayor, I have a, a comment and a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman McGoffin.
John Coleman about this a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so the comment I had was, you know, try to meet halfway on something. I think there has to be some bounds and I think 30 is too high. I think 10 is in the range that I'd be acceptable with. Um, but if we went that route, I'd also like to see uh, some of the parking be used for like quick access. So things like pickup, delivery, um, things of that nature that you could be more efficient with the parking that you do have, you know, maybe four or five spaces upfront that they could designate so that, you know, you don't have people driving around the parking lot if they're just going to go pick up their food or, um, if they're just picking up a friend. Um, I totally agree with the on-street parking not being an option. I think that we have to defend that. But I think, you know, 10%, you know, is an option that we could propose and I would be supportive of that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, I did, I had some questions for John earlier about that. And as far as like, what is the reach? He did clarify it is just the UVMU zone. And I, I was looking at that and looking at the plan. I'm in favor of less asphalt and concrete on the ground at first. I'm, I'm not sure if that's possible to do something like that. And then for them to realize, oh, it's not working and then add additional parking spaces, or if that's something we would even put forth, right? As far as the council, that's all in the planning and the permit process that's agreed upon after the fact. But I would, I would be in favor of, of that shared use, um, and seeing a little bit more, a little bit less of the permanent, uh, stuff down on the ground and having a little bit more greenery around the area if possible. I, I didn't think about that, uh, Brent, what Councilman Brendan mentioned too, as far as that quick access. That actually sounds like a pretty, pretty good idea no matter what, uh, for, for such a large structure, such a large business, uh, units and so many people there. So, um, yeah, I think it does in, I, I was thinking it would encourage a lot more bike usage, which would be good. But as John pointed out, we are in a rural community. We're not in a, in more of a city setting or condensed unit setting, which is what makes us a really unique and awesome community too. But it would be cool to encourage that bike use and, and see a little bit more of that travel throughout the community.
So you're talking about the possibility of, um, uh, putting in bike, uh, space on the road for bikes?
Yeah, not, not right away, obviously, but as that, as if that happens and we're seeing a little bit more shared use and people are emptying out or opting into getting bikes to get back and forth here in town for like going to the Pioneer Market um, or whatnot, or going downtown to do bowling or, or have drinks, then biking back. Then we would see eventually maybe in, uh, three years, five years, 10 years, a bike lane more designated through town. That would, that would, that would help, uh, a bit with tourism, a bit with community and a bit with recreation.
All right, thank you.
Kind of like all my questions with John regarding that. And especially my big one was that nine to five. Because obviously what community operates just at nine to five, and like Sarah was saying, you know, most places are going with COVID, have, have started working from home and we'll log a rodeo. That's on the weekends. It goes pretty late. Uh, you know, a lot of our events do the parades and stuff and we see the town fill up. So, um, yeah, I wouldn't be in, in favor of the on-street parking myself at all either.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Councilman, oh, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
Can I ask, uh, can the, we don't have to act on this tonight, right?
No, this first.
I, I would like to see the planning commission refine some of the language before it comes before us again. Uh, you know, I just think that's, you know, to clear up any little gray areas and stuff.
Is there, is there a possibility that, um, Mr. Coleman could take, um, I'm taking copious notes here and I'm sure he is too, um, could take this information and um, do some tweaking and bring it back and then you could look at it again and
I don't think we need to hold on it tonight.
No, and, and, and there isn't, there's no action tonight. Yeah. Okay. Good. Are you okay with that, John, or?
Uh, yeah, procedurally, um, it would be changing it from a planning commission recommendation uh, to I guess a planning commission recommendation with, uh, council suggestions. Um, and so that's what the ordinance, the proposed ordinance could look like. And you could take a look at that and then, you know, vote yea or nay. Uh, at a future council, uh, you can, as far as I understand, you can have as many reads on this as you want, but we don't want to go on forever.
Yeah. We usually do a three touch. It's a three touch. It comes before you three times before usually we vote. So, yeah.
So yes, next time you could possibly have action or?
Are you, you're comfortable with that? Okay. All right, um, Councilman Owen, would you, do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, I, I agree with Joe. I don't see any, any, anything beneficial to the city. Uh, you know, if they keep expanding out there, you ought to have in their mind about building a parking garage or something. Uh, I, I don't want to see cars parked all over. So I agree with, with, uh, Joe and, and Joe Allen. I, I don't know what, it's no benefit to the city. Yeah. It benefits the contractors, but uh, I think they ought to be thinking about all this stuff before they started this project. Uh, we did approve it, but we approved it as is. And I'd like to see it stay as is.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just had one, one more item.
Yes, Councilman McGoffin.
Thank you. Uh, when I was reading through the packet, I also got a little bit confused because at the beginning, the commission seemed like they were opposed to this idea. And they listed a lot of reasons why they were in opposition, but then at the end, they seem to have voted in favor. Um, if it's possible, I'd like to maybe here get some of those reasons why they changed their opinion, um, so that we could consider those as well.
Thank you. Is that possible, John?
Um, I was unable to really achieve that, um, possibly, gosh, sort of looking at the, the minute, uh, like re-watching the, you know, the last two planning commission meetings kind of gives you a feel for it. I can see if I can try to suss that out further.
And that's also available online for any of the council members who wish to go back and watch that debate and discussion. And, um, that way then you can assess from your own point of view, um, what that's about. Are you okay with doing that, uh, Mr. McGoffin? Or do you still want John to bring back something?
I'm, I'm okay with doing that. I can go back and look at him.
Okay. Perhaps that would be helpful. Yes, Councilwoman Kestie.
I, I personally watched those and I watched every single one of them and you'll, you'll be able to see what's going on there and figure it out. There, it's very helpful to go back and look.
Yep. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else or John, any closing comments? I don't see anybody with any questions, any closing comments. Okay.
Not for me. Thank you.
Um, do you have enough information, sounds like it, to work with? Maybe too much?
We'll see you next time when I bring it back, if I got it right.
Yeah.
I'll do my best.
You know you will. You do good work. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that actually, did we cover it all? We did. That concludes, uh, the council meeting tonight. I don't have anything for the good of the order. I do want to remind everybody though, next council meeting is the 22nd. And a reminder to be here at 5:30 that we are going to do, um, uh, safety training. So if everybody can be in the council chambers here at 5:30 for safety training, uh, that'll be great. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And with all that,
This is last time.
Is this your last time? Yeah. So is Dan going to be sitting in from now on? Okay. We don't, we don't want to say goodbye just yet. So, okay. We appreciate you. Excellent. It was good seeing her here tonight. All right. And we'll see her next, uh, next council meeting on the 22nd. I believe she's sworn in on the 22nd, isn't she? Oh, all right, on the 22nd. Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you. And, uh, we are adjourned.